Good morning, everyone. It is 8:30. I will call this morning's meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order. Our first item on the agenda this morning is an approval of the agenda. I am asking that we pull the lease at the landfill from the consent agenda, lease of the landfill for varmint management, just so we can get clarification. Hopefully, we'll get that by the end of the meeting.
Move to move the agenda.
Second. Motion from Commissioner Gross to approve an amended agenda, a second from Commissioner Kaylee. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Citizens to be heard this morning. Are there any citizens in the audience wishing to address the board on any item not on the agenda? Any citizens to be heard? Steve, have you had any correspondence on this item?
Have not, Madam Chair.
Just as a reminder to the public, this is an opportunity for folks to address the commission, either in person or if you'd like to do that virtually, there's a link posted online that you may do that as well. The approval of the payment of bills and vouchers.
Second.
Motion from Commissioner Gross to approve the payment of bills and vouchers, a second from Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. The July 5th, 2022 meeting minutes are presented.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Campbell to approve the minutes. And a second from Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Item two is the budget presentation from our Recorder's Office. We have Kimberly Savageo, our county recorder. Good morning, Kim.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I'm here today to present to you my 2023 budget for the Recorder's Office. On the top, underneath my revenues, I am showing a slight proposed decrease in revenues. We had quite a significant year of recording last year, and I don't anticipate that this year, already being down over 2,000 documents for this year. In my expenses, the only real increase I have is one line item that I increased from $1,000 to $1,500 for a 50% increase in that line. Otherwise, I have no new requests, and everything else has pretty much stayed the same. Do you have any questions for me on my budget?
Questions on the budget? Questions on the budget? It's hard to argue when you have no new requests and everything changes the same. I do want to say, I think you're doing far more with less, and the amount of documents that you're processing and streamlining processes is just far and above. You just are doing a really great job for access and records keeping. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the board? Great, way to go. Rory, I'm sorry. The budget presentation for Technology Services. Rory Schmitz, good morning.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. Today, I'd like to present my 2023 budget for Technology Services. This year has been no exception to the price increases that we've been seeing in the industry and the county as a whole, but we will run through. And some of these critical applications where we absolutely need the software and services are ones that we've had to consistently go with the increases. Other options to save on budget costs, we've looked for cheaper alternatives and extend the life of some of those services we have. Jumping into my worksheet, pretty much standard increases, but I will jump down to my other professional services fund. We're requesting two items on that. One is a threat vulnerability management solution that we've been working with the State of Minnesota IT on. This has been critical in identifying and mitigating different security vulnerabilities in our department and throughout the county. Currently, we're in a pilot program, so this first year has been free of charge, but in 2023, they're estimating the cost to be around $8,500. The second request for other professional services would be to start replacing the legacy clock system we have. In the courthouse, we have around 75 of these clocks. For next year, we propose to replace about half of those where the county facing staff, and we'll leave the other tenants kind of out of it until maybe the following year, but that's where the next $18,000 would come from, and that would be for services to add wiring to new locations and cap off any electrical wiring that exists in the existing system. One item that I noticed on the worksheet, I'm not sure if you see it in front of you, but our computer software fund, that one, we do have a new request that's not listed there for $13,000 for a more robust email backup using our Office 365 platform we use. Jumping down to the internal services increase, you'll see there's a $95,000 increase there. I do have one handout that you should all have in front of you, and the majority of this is to cover those COVID laptops that we purchased a couple of years ago. If you can see the top section, the COVID laptops, we ordered around 300 of them in 2020, 2021, for a total of around $101,000. So our current PC replacement is roughly $146,000, and adding those COVID laptops on, that brings us, we're a little shy, about $74,000 and some change. So that $75,000 increase would be to get us on par with the replacement schedule to keep going every three to four years. The other $20,000 of that would be for audiovisual equipment, to start putting money aside for rooms like the boardroom here and the sheriff's office, meeting rooms, where all the equipment needed for the microphones and displays and all the audio and video that goes along with that. Is there any questions?
Any questions for Rory?
Aren't COVID funds all used up?
No.
There are some money still existing.
About 300 and some thousand still available. That isn't...
Could some of this be applied to that?
It could. I think we should, I think we should take that piece to the ARPA committee for consideration.
And what about the clocks you said you changed? Why were any different clocks, or what?
The displays are starting to fade out. They're not displaying all the digits properly, so these would be new IP-based clocks that you plug in, take with you. They automatically adjust the time. Currently, the legacy clock system, you have to manually change it at daylight savings time.
So these are all atomic, then?
Not atomic, but they're synced to a time server.
On the laptops, we still have a need for all, for this quantity of them, even though we're back in our regular services and not working remotely to the extent we were.
That is, that is one thing we considered, is where are we sitting with that? But we get to a point again, and we're not maybe fully out of this pandemic, or even maybe the new monkeypox, maybe that's coming along. We'll see. I'd say it's maybe best to stay where we're at for now and just see what happens.
We were at a meeting with Commissioners from another county, a smaller county, a few, oh, a month or so ago, and because of the ability to work remotely that we prepared for during COVID, some of these smaller counties have had such an enormous increase in their budget to gas that they're encouraging their Commissioners to maybe chime in remotely instead of needing to drive to pay the gas reimbursement, just to help the budget. So, you know, to the question, I think that, I think we're in a time where there's a new flexibility for folks to be able to either work remotely or do webinars that don't require travel. And I really am hopeful that they're getting good use, because it was such a large investment. Any other questions? Any other questions? Well, to my earlier comment to Kimberly's staff, the reason most of these departments are running so efficiently is because of the work that your department does. That technology piece is something that we lean on quite heavily, and your staff and department do such a great job to be responsive to the needs. And, you know, I know that there is an increase here, and I'm hopeful we can find maybe funds elsewhere to help mitigate the costs. But there's a really important reason for that, is because we are relying more on what the technology services are, and thank you for your work over the last year. And I do appreciate that we're adding internal service funds to help deal with the new costs in some of this technology, the microphones, the screens, etc. Anything else? All right. Thanks, Rory.
Thank you.
Item four is a Resolution 2022-24 for the county to participate in a performance measurement program. We have our HR Director, Darren Brooke. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. This is kind of my annual visit to the board on the performance measurement program. It's a program that the county's been doing since 2011, and it's run by the state auditor. And what it's designed to do is give feedback to the citizens of Clay County on how we're doing in each individual area. And I have a list here of public safety, probations and corrections, public works on highway, public health, social services, taxation, elections, veteran services, recorder, library, environmental, and then a resolution to continue the program for next year as well. So this is a resolution that I'm asking the board to commit to continuing this program for 2022, which would be reported in 2023. We do get money back from the state by participating in this program. Last year, in December of '21, we've got, we got the 2020 payment, which ended up being $9,145. So that's what we got last December for this, for participating in this program. Right now, I would say probably about a third of the counties participate in this program, and then the results will be posted on our website for the citizens to see as soon as it's approved and a resolution is made.
Commissioner Campbell.
Do we have any numbers that show how many citizens might even look at this information?
Once we post it, I can probably pull how many clicks are, you know, that...
Might be helpful to know. If you've got, if you've got something, and you're investing this kind of money, and then nobody is looking at it, it's kind of like, did a tree fall in the woods or something?
Yeah.
You know, I just...
I can ask IT to see if they can pull that from last year. If not, we can look at it this year. I think it has to be posted for 90 days, so...
I know, I know. We can often see clicks on just about every department, so I'm assuming they should have that.
I would think so. I did not bring that with me this morning.
I think to that question, we've talked about that with Mark Sloan. He's been able to pull visits. Not related to this, maybe, is making sure that either this is on the newsflash, but to simplify some of those news flashes. I know that it has a tendency to be quite deep to where it's not really a newsflash anymore. It's, you have to cycle through several pages. So when you ask those questions, maybe ask that as well.
Okay.
Yes, Commissioner Gross.
You said there's only about a third of the counties that participate. Is there be more participating? Will we get less money then, or?
No, what they do is they, and I forget the amount, but they give a certain dollar amount or cents amount for how many citizens you have in the county. So I forget what that is, but depending, it's dependent on your county population, is what you give.
Thank you.
Questions? Any other questions? There's a resolution in the packet, 2022?
It should be, it should be.
I don't think I got it. It's on the back.
The back.
On the back. And I have a great idea for that $9,145. It could be used as HR revenue for my new request this year. I was just going to put that out there.
Okay. Well, that comment can be noted during discussions, Steve, to bring that back up.
Okay.
So 2022-24 is the resolution. Move approval of the resolution. Motion from Commissioner Kaylee to approve the resolution.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Ebinger. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried.
Okay.
Thank you. If possible, I'd like to address the lease at the landfill for varmint management and trapping that we were a little bit ahead of schedule. Solid Waste Department has reached out. The name of the individual is Gerald Clages, J-E-R-A-L-D-C-L-A-G-E-S. And the lease has been through the attorney's office. Review?
Yes, yes, it has, Madam Chair.
Sorry, I wasn't sure if that was a question. I...
No, it wasn't, but yeah, sorry.
Yes, I drew it off.
My tone wasn't correct. So yes, it has been reviewed. This is something Solid Waste has presented as needed. Move approval of the lease? A motion from Commissioner Kaylee to approve the varmint management and trapping lease.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Ebinger. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Thank you. Thank you for reaching out to Brett, Steve, and getting that information. The next item this morning is an overview and request for approval of the financial plan for the Substance Abuse Crisis Facility project. Our administrator, Stephen Larson; our detox facility director, Troy Amundson. Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair. Potential of a very exciting day this morning, a lot of work that's gone through this for a number of years. I thought that I would, just briefly, before we get into the financial plan, provide a little bit of insight, kind of of where we're, where we've been and where we're, where we're at now, potentially. If you recall, back in 2018, this board approved the detoxification program to apply for a Department of Human Service grants, an amount of $5 million. At that point, this board selected Klein-McCarthy to develop a pre-design. It was a requirement of grant application. Unfortunately, we did not receive the grant back in 2008, but there was another opportunity that came in the summer of 2021 for that, for another $5 million. There were two different opportunities of up to $5 million. And again, this board selected Klein-McCarthy to kind of dust off our old, our old pre-design as part of that application process. In November of 2021, Troy was notified that they received preliminary approval of the $5 million grant, and at that point, our detoxification committee began, beginning to have some different meetings. In January of this year, this board approved, in accepting, the $5 million grant through Resolution 2022-05, and in doing so, they acknowledged that there would be some additional costs or additional funding that would be needed to complete that project. Over the winter of this year, we had two different community, excuse me, county board work groups that allowed our Commissioners to provide insight and direction on what they felt to be important in this project. And in March of 2022, this board approved Klein-McCarthy Architects to complete another pre-design based on providing information on a one-story, a one-story with floor footings to allow to go up a second level, and also a two-story. At that time, the board also approved a survey, land survey for county-owned property up on 15th Avenue North. In June, this commission approved a building site, a floor plan, and also received a cost estimate in a presentation by Klein-McCarthy. At that time, this board also approved shifting the future discussions from the detox committee to, to the finance committee. And as part of that discussion, the finance committee would, would be evaluating whether or not we would be looking to potentially having any, any portion of that second floor, footings for a second floor. And again, with the understanding that the cost estimate of 13.9 million did not include any add-ons for, for that second floor. In the summer, the finance committee has met on multiple occasions, evaluating the cost and the pre-design and all the funding mechanisms available, which brings us, brings us to this morning's board agenda. Again, this is the floor plan, just a reminder that you state that currently has been selected. It's a one-story. We have 21,771 gross square feet. We have 32 interchangeable beds, both a Rule 32 and 245F programs, which would be our normal detox program, but then also medical... Troy, help me out. Yeah?
245F is a clinically managed program. It's a Level 3.2, so it's a step up from, from normal detox operations and how we work with the clients. So it's, it's got requirements of mandatory minimum LPN, being on duty at all times. Techs are more restricted in what they can do. The nurses have to do the intakes, things like that. So we were doing a lot of those things already in Rule 32, but we just started, actually, we're a little over a week into our withdrawal management program, so...
Thank you, Troy. And part of this process, again, we value engineered the initial, initial plan, and were able to cut the square footage by over 2,000 square feet. The location that was selected is on the south side of our Resource Recovery Facility location on 15th Avenue and 34th Street. Again, as we've talked about, the, there, the drawing, there, the dark gray areas is the, the proposed detox facility. The light gray area would be the potential of a mental health wing that's been discussed for future growth. And then if you take a look to the, what would be the east, there also is the potential for a building site for future county needs. What, what was placed in there was between a 20,000 to 22,000 square foot building, just from a size perspective, from, from the board's standpoint. Again, the, the facility cost, cost estimate came in at 13.9 million. There's about 12, 12.4 million dollars in, in actual construction costs, and then about another million dollars in soft costs that get us to that, that final number. Which gets us to our discussion today. Over the last couple of weeks, Commissioner Campbell has noted during our committee assignments, he brought forward some of the ideas that have been shared. And so the proposal this morning for the board to consider would be the utilization of the $5 million from the Department of Human Services grant. This board approved utilizing up to $7.5 million of American Rescue money for the project, and the proposal would be used all 7.5 of that. We had an opioid settlement. Clay County will be receiving just over $2 million here as early as, half or a portion of that money starting to come in as early as this week, actually. And we had a meeting with Social Services, Public Health, in determining what some of the, the needs of those funds. And out of that committee meeting, felt that $1 million of the $2 million could be allotted towards this program. That left us $449,198 short, and we are, we would be looking to our county reserves, our social service fund balance for that. I think an important thing to note, although Troy works for Public Health, when, when the budget comes through here to this board, it's actually run through Social Services. And so when Troy has revenues over expenditures, that money ends up going into Rhonda's, Rhonda's budget. And so over the last number of years, there's been, we have a number, it's about $700,000, about $700,000 of revenue that has gone from detox into, into that budget. And so that would bring a total of 13,949,198.
13 million.
Oh, excuse me.
949,198. That's okay.
Thank you.
Question on that?
So I think just for our discussion, again, I think this board has been a very, from a, from a planning standpoint, whether it's been our cares and our ARPA funds of having legacy impacts, I think that this certainly is something that does that. There's no bonding funds that would come under this plan, and so there would be no additional costs or levy of asking our citizens. It's replacing the facility. It really has outlived its original intent. The people that were coming to our, our facility when this facility opened are, some are similar, but some have some significant changes and higher needs. And so we want to make sure that we're able to adjust those needs. So with that, I would yield for any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. As noted, this has really been a conversation that has been building over the course of years. And I agree, I think this is the potential to be a really exciting day for us to really take a bold step forward to help address not only the fact that the building has outlived its original intent, but to build upon the legacy piece that you, you talked about when this county has taken a large step over the last few years to address the services provided and the facilities that we have. I think the original intent was to just deal with the folks that come through those doors, and, and there they go. And we really are changing the scope of service and services provided, connections, hopeful for people when they leave the doors of that, to be a much larger service to our community than we've been doing. Troy, you've done a fantastic job with what you've been given over there, but it's time for us to, to really pony up and, and help with this. I know there's some comments, but I just, I, I'll say on the 13,900, certainly, this is a time where construction prices are volatile, and we'll see maybe with the actions that are being asked for later, what those come in at. But this is certainly a solid, strong financial plan to start. Anything else? Yes, Commissioner Ebinger.
Yeah, 16 years ago, when I came to this community as police chief, one of the first things that was brought to my attention was that the detox facility couldn't keep up with the demand. I'll be real frank, I comforted myself in that that's pretty much the situation most of the states in. But most of the states in a problem finding a place for juvenile offenders, that's nurturing and supportive. Some parts of the state have trouble with correctional facilities that are adequate, and we've addressed those issues. And this is long overdue. I think it's a regional need. This, we're developing as a response for our county need, but the region is going to, you build it, they will come. And this is a facility, you're certainly not going to run something like this with an eye towards having more revenues than expenditures, but because of the need for it, that's often the case. I appreciate that this facility is designed with growth in mind. I especially appreciate that we are at least keeping an eye on at some future date, maybe having the opportunity to address the, the huge need we have for emergent mental health issues in this county and in this region. And that, this plan shows foresight in both those areas. So I'm excited about this. This is something we've needed for, long before I came here, for decades, literally. And I think that there's been a lot of effort in finding revenues to help support this, and a lot of effort in designing something that meets our immediate needs with an eye towards growth. And I am very grateful for the work that's gone into this by staff.
Commissioner Campbell.
The, the detox, I've never liked our detox facility, and I've never, I've never liked where it's at. I, I, I think the fact that we...
at. I think the fact that we shared a facility for that clientele within a building that also had a daycare facility, and numerous other public places for different reasons for people to go, to have them co-locate with a facility like this, I don't think is a good mix. You know, I think the, probably the top two things that we got going on in our county that we're facing with, of course, internally, it's workforce issues, and externally, it's mental health issues. And some of that's even internally. But I think this facility is going to take a step towards being able to maybe address some of the other mental health issues within our communities. Maybe not where we'd like it to be to start with, but at least this is a footprint that allows for us to move in a better direction there. So, and I'm very pleased that we're able to provide this, at least the bricks and mortar. Steve, you mentioned that there's going to be no levy cost to the bricks and mortar. That isn't to say that when you open a new facility like this and you go from a, I think for a while there, we had a 10-bed, and now we're going to be up to a 32-bed facility, it's hard for us to suggest that there won't be any additional costs that go with that piece of it. And we'll continue to work on that. But Troy has said maybe we can have some different revenue opportunities that we didn't have before, based on your licensing processes and insurance reimbursements. And so that's encouraging to hear. So I fully support what came out of the finance committee in terms of the funding. I still think we're kidding ourselves if the final number is going to be what it's saying here. So I think we better be prepared to find additional resources if needed, so.
Commissioner Kaylee?
Were you done, Kevin?
I'm done, thank you.
I keep hearing from folks in the community that work in chemical dependency that this is an ever-increasing problem. So as Commissioner Ebbinger just said, 16 years ago, it was an issue. It's only become a greater and greater and greater issue in our area and continues on that trajectory. Chemical dependency is something that affects all families, regardless of your socioeconomic status, ability, ethnicity. It affects all of us. And I am really proud to support this project. This is something that even before I was elected, I was talking about, that we needed. I really see Clay County as a county that takes care of its citizens with care and dignity, and a mindset that folks should leave us with a plan towards continued well-being. And so I thank you for all of your work in contributing to that. While the price tag is big for this project, it's going to have a lasting impact on so many families in our region, and it's worth every penny. You know, even if we have to find a few more pennies, it's going to be worth it. So thank you.
Commissioner Gross?
This is just one of those projects, I think, just like the Correctional Center. I mean, we had plans for that probably 15, 20 years ago, and finally developed, you know, the juvenile center, you know. And I mean, this plan too, was, we had things drawn up for it, I don't know, five, 10 years ago already. Now we're finally putting this into the action, and it's really, I mean, it's gratifying to see that we're, with the ARPA funds and the opioid funds, that we're going to be able to do this now. And I think it's a good plan. We had several meetings with Klein-McCarthy already on the design of it, and I think we're ready to move ahead on this now.
Thank you for all your good work on getting it prepared.
Yes, Commissioner Campbell?
Madam Chair, I would move that we approve the financial plan as presented by the finance committee for moving forward with the substance abuse crisis facility project.
Second, I have a motion from Commissioner Campbell to approve the request of financial plan, a second from Commissioner Kaylee. Further discussion? I'd also like to maybe formally comment that I want us to, in titling everything moving forward to Substance Abuse Crisis Facility. And I think that probably goes to change Troy's title as well. But I think that with the transfer of focus and scope, it really does fall within that. Any further discussion?
This is exciting. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Item six is a request authorization to execute design contract with Klein-McCarthy Architects for Substance Abuse Crisis Facility.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With the board's actions, we are looking to move forward with the actual design. We have worked closely, as we mentioned, over the years with Klein-McCarthy Architect Services, going back to 2018 with the detox initial pre-design. And so the request before you this morning would be to execute that, a contract with Klein-McCarthy for their architectural services. In looking at the contract, the total construct, excuse me, the expense is based on a 6.75% of the total construction budget. Again, the total price of the project is proposed right now, or estimated at 13.9. The estimated cost was based off the actual construction costs, which right now are $12,428,170, which would be a percentage of $838,901, plus reimbursable expenses, which are listed in your packet. Just in context, the percentage that we had on the correctional facility and law enforcement center was 7%, so we're at a little bit of a lower piece there. Just within the design, just to give the board some context of what we're at, if the board were to approve this today, the design process would begin immediately. We would be looking to continue to meet through the design process through January of 2023, with bidding going out in February of 2023. We'd be looking to start construction in May of next year, with a potential completion date of October or November of 2024. Through the grant process that Troy and his staff received through the Minnesota Department of Human Services, the projects are to be completed by December 31 of 2024, and so that would stay within the scope of that grant parameters. So with that, I'd yield for any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you. Steve, the $838,901, which is 6.75 of the construction cost, does that include the money we've already paid to them for pre-design?
That does not. That would be on top of what we've paid.
Okay. And then, maybe I'll ask a separate question, not related to this.
Okay. Later?
Yeah.
Questions? Commissioner Ebbinger?
Just an observation. Klein-McCarthy has been a good partner on a couple of pretty major projects that the county's had. And just, I want to express, and I hope the county administrator can concur with this, that they have been reliable in the past as meeting the obligations that we have when we enter into an agreement with them.
Absolutely. Madam Chair, Commissioner Ebbinger, we've had great success in working with Scott Fettig and his team. They're very professional. They're extremely attentive in any different issues and challenges that we face. They've been great to work with to find alternatives to some of the challenges that we faced, and I know we've been extremely happy.
Do you want to ask that follow-up question, or do you want to wait?
I am going to move approval of the contract with Klein-McCarthy.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Campbell to authorize and execute the design contract with Klein-McCarthy for our Substance Abuse Crisis Facility, a second from Commissioner Ebbinger. Further discussion? All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you. Now, I just want to, the $5 million grant, that grant has still come through the state of Minnesota, and typically, those grants are based on a, they pay so much towards a project as it's moving forward. Like in our construction deal, it's 50/50. You know, as soon as we have, if we submit $10,000, they'll give us, or $20,000, they'll give us 10. And just more from a planning standpoint, in the future, when dollars would be needed, we should probably understand the internal language of that as to when they reimburse, so that we're not caught maybe having to submit too many funds ahead of time. And then, it's just, it's a planning thing that we can't lose sight of.
Yeah. And I'll work with Roy, who's our project manager on that. We're trying to finalize the contract, and one of the last items that we needed was a timeline of when this would be done. So now that we kind of have that, I can submit that, get the contract done. And he is actually out for another, I think, two, three weeks on vacation, but I'll look into that.
And then I would just suggest that anything related to that and timelines, to include Lori on that, because she writes the checks, so. That's all I have.
All right. Okay, moving into the next item then, would be a request to submit an RFQ for a construction manager or CMAR, construction manager at risk, for our Substance Abuse Crisis Facility construction.
I think you said it all, Madam Chair. I don't know that I have anything else to add to that.
I think that I just might comment that within committee, it was decided that opening it up to either a construction manager proposal qualification, or a construction manager at risk, really afforded the county the best scope to understand what services could be provided with different organizations. Certainly, we will follow, once we receive this, the same timeline and process as we have with our other projects, a full board interviews, as we process through those proposals. So it's a little bit of a change, as we've done CMAR projects before, but really feel this affords us the most, to get the most information. Commissioner Kaylee?
For folks listening, do you want to just give an overview of what the difference between construction manager and construction manager at risk would be?
So CM at risk is basically our liaison between the architects and all of our contractors. For example, they would, in a CM, we would have, if we had 30 subcontractors or contractors, we would have to contract with them individually. CM at risk essentially takes that ownership and responsibility of the project, and works individually with their group. They also then have oversight of the project, so when things are needing some attention, it's not someone from the county who's responsible to make sure that those projects are moving forward. And that's probably a very, very high view, but those are some of the differences.
Thank you.
I might add to that, too, that under the at-risk, you do get a, what is supposed to be a final cost upfront. You know, in other words, what's it called, Steve?
Guaranteed maximum price.
Guaranteed maximum price, and which, there's always adjustments to that anyway, but I think it's fine with what we're planning here.
And I do think it's important, Commissioner Campbell's point is that we have a process now to which, under CM at risk, you have the architect, you have the construction management group, they're talking that through. Not that the construction manager would not do that, but in the end, there's more of a likelihood of them saying, here's the cost, versus bringing in change orders.
Commissioner Campbell?
So I just want to ask, is it, because we don't have the final design done, would a final design give us a better indication, or, I guess my question is, are we putting the cart before the horse here, asking for this, or we have a design?
No, I think it's important. It's important to have the CM at risk involved as early as possible from the value engineering standpoint. I think that we saw, one of the challenges that we saw with the resource recovery facility is we didn't have a CM at risk on at the beginning. We just had our architect, and we were, I think we kind of saw that we were chasing a few different things as the process went. And so I think it's very valuable to have them on board as soon as we can.
Okay, good.
Further questions? In regards to the timeline for this, Steve, when are you anticipating the advertisement part?
Well, after this, Troy will get to work on that. And so I think that as soon as he's able to get that CM, or excuse me, submit for qualifications completed, we will have that out hopefully here within the next few weeks.
I'm going to make a motion to request, submit the request for qualifications.
A motion from Commissioner Gross to request to submit the RFQ for a construction manager or CMAR.
Second?
A second from Commissioner Kaylee. Further discussion?
Madam Chair, I just wonder if something like that, before we submit that, is, Brian, do you think that's something that you should look at, on something like that? I just think maybe just to be sure that everything is covered. I don't think you've ever prepared one of these before, right? So that's why I just suggest.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Campbell, we generally work with Brian in his office in developing, or going through once that's been developed, to have him take a peek, and we'll do that again.
Thank you.
Do you want to add the review with Brian?
Okay. Adding an attorney's office review. Further discussion? Commissioner Gross, it seems like almost a decade ago, we were having these conversations at the family service center, and your persistence, Troy, has really paid off, and this is exciting. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, very much.
Okay, our next item is the budget presentation from the highway department, our county engineer, Justin Sorum. Good morning, Justin.
Good morning. Yeah, so I'm here this morning to present our budget for 2023. Just a kind of a snapshot, our budget is comprised of four different sections, maintenance, construction, administration, and shop. I will start with maintenance. On the revenue side, we just used past year's trends and what we're expecting for revenues from state aid. Just one item of note is 10-3-10-5409. That is the township maintenance contract revenues, which is based on a five-year rolling average. The expenditure side, the first thing you'll notice is a new request for a maintenance worker. So I plan to decrease the budgeted part-time labor, and we will be seeing a savings from one known retirement, potentially a second one from what we've been hearing. So we have been having a really difficult time getting qualified applicants with the new CDL laws. And in the wintertime, we rely heavily on having three variable-hour plow drivers. We actually hired one of our variable-hour plow drivers this past year to be full-time. So that's kind of where that request is coming from. It would not require any additional equipment, and they would be on the patch crew in the summertime. Overtime you'll see is increased. That's just trying to capture what we have been seeing. Last winter, there was a lot of weekend snow plowing. 10-3-10-64-54 is down. That's just because it's not a boot year. Every two years for the union contract, we buy boots. 10-3-10-6502, road materials, I did increase that by $50,000. So that's our annual gravelling contract. Those costs are up as well, just trying to maintain the same amount of gravel we have been putting down. And then, 10-3-10-6807, intergovernmental payments, so that is the Moorhead Street allotment. That also covers turnbacks of the Moorhead Street allotment. That also covers turnbacks at Twelfth Avenue and Fortieth Avenue, the town road allotment and gravel tax. I guess, is there any questions on the maintenance side?
No question for me, just a comment on the weekend hours. Those are, in my eyes, a non-negotiable. It seems like we always get a major snowstorm on a Saturday and or Sunday night, and those roads have to be popped open in order for folks to get to work, especially buses on Monday mornings. So I know that that's a major budget buster, and maybe with some tweaking of scheduling, we could, you know, figure something out. But, you know, I, those are completely understandable, because those are the calls that I personally received.
Yeah, and as you can see, June here to date, we're already over our budget for this past year.
Yeah.
Okay, I will move to the construction side. So, ten-three-twenty, fifty-two-twenty, you'll see eight hundred thousand dollars. So that is the LRIP grant we received for the construction on CASA eighteen. Bridge bonding, obviously, there wasn't a bonding bill. We are just matching what our five-year plan shows. There is no CASA municipal projects planned for next year. CASA regular is at three point nine million. That does match what we show on our five-year plan. And then, the thirty thousand dollars on miscellaneous revenue, that is the revenues we receive from town bridge projects. As far as the expenditure side, so, or overtime is down slightly. We just have a less paving than we had this past year. Ten-three-twenty, sixty-two-seventy-one, we did purchase an additional Civil 3D license, which is our design software. So all of our technicians have a license now. Ten-three-twenty, sixty-two-seventy-four, engineering consultant, technical service, that one went up quite a bit from last year. We're just trying to capture what we have been spending. I do plan to do more pavement testing in the future, and as well as hydraulic analysis, and then MINDOC costs have been going up. Last year, we did spend quite a bit more than budgeted. I mean, with the Georgetown Bridge and the North Broadway Bridge, those studies just kind of came up, and it's hard to budget for that. And then, ten-three-twenty, sixty-three-thirty-one, travel. I do plan on sending another technician to in-service bridge inspection training. So the training is actually free, MINDOC covers that now, but we just have to cover, cover travel and expenses. And that's down in the cities. Ten-three-twenty, sixty-six, thirty-two is obviously down, because there's, we did receive quite a bit in federal funding this year through the STIP. There's no federal funding next year. I guess, any questions on the construction side? For the most part, there's nothing, no real big changes.
When do, when do we hear what the actual payment on our?
State aid allotment is.
State aid allotment is.
I believe it's January.
For twenty, we won't even know until January?
Yep.
Okay. But wasn't that, yeah, it was?
Because, well, you can see, in 2022...
It was, it was, like, was it four point two?
Last year, yep. And then, bridge bonding. Obviously, we don't know until we receive funding on particular bridges.
All right, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
The administration side, that is three-thirty. So this covers my position, the assistant engineer, two office staff, and our highway accountant. There's nothing really changed on the revenue side. It's just overweight permits, moving and utility permits. And then, ten-three-thirty, fifty-eight, thirty-eight, miscellaneous is just joint facility admin fees from the state and city of Moorhead that we charge them. On the expenditure side, we did increase overtime a little bit, just trying to capture what's actually there. Ten-three-thirty, sixty-two, sixty-one, so that is our audits from the state. So we, we have been getting audited quite a bit. And with the federal year this year, I'm sure we're going to receive quite a few audits in 2023. So it's just trying to capture actual costs. Other professional services, that's our RT Vision, so our one-office software and time card. Travel and expenses, so that covers both the national conference, the Minnesota County Engineer Summer Conference, the Winter Conference, the Transportation Alliance Conference. And then, you will see in the equipment over five hundred, there is a new request. So every seven years, we do budget for a new printer. So that's under the new request column there. That's a printer we use to print all of our plans, spec books.
Is that, is that an internal service?
That is one thing we talked to Lori about, and Ann and Lori were checking into. I haven't gotten an answer back on that yet, though. If it is an internal service, then it'll just...
Could be.
Yeah.
Then it'll just come back as a request to purchase to the board, and the new request will be taken off.
Okay. Any other questions?
And the final one is shop, so this covers our diesel mechanic and our shop foreman. We increased overtime consistent with the maintenance. If we're out plowing, either Clayton or Mike will have to be in the shop, because there is always breakdowns. Ten-three-forty, sixty-two, fifty-two, we did increase natural gas and propane costs, trying to capture what actual costs are. Probably the biggest increase I have is ten-three-forty, sixty-four-ten, which is fuel. So last year, our budget was three hundred and sixty thousand. As you can see, June year-to-date is already two hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-one, and that's not capturing everything that we have used in June yet either. So I did, in working with Lori, we did double this cost. We haven't decreased any of our maintenance or anything, so it's, just with fuel prices, it's kind of hard to guess at what fuel prices are going to be in 2023. And Ann and I did look at, in May, if we averaged out what we expended in May for the rest of the year, we'd be at seven hundred and twenty thousand for 2022. Should be double what we had budgeted. Ten-three-forty, sixty-six-oh-two, radio equipment, so that is up two thousand. We're still just buying two new radios every year. That's just up to cover the cost of what radios are. And then, internal service fund and marketing with Lori, we do have fifty thousand as a new request there, bringing our total up to one million, one hundred and fifty thousand. Any questions on the shop side of things?
Questions? No questions?
And I guess on the last page, the only thing to really note is capital improvements, ten-eight-oh-five, sixty-nine, fifty-five. That's fifty thousand dollar payment as to solid waste for the landfill shop.
Is, is there an expiration on that payment, or?
Yes, I could, I did try to look for that, but I could not find it.
Just curious. Questions? There's a lot here, so it'll take a while to go through it, but thank you for doing the best you can with a short amount of time.
If you have any questions, please reach out on any of the items.
Questions? All right. Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Committee reports. Just item of note on the upcoming meetings, I'd like us to advertise the ribbon cutting of the, the underpass, Steve? I think that's next Monday.
At four o'clock.
At four o'clock, thank you, Commissioner Gross. Commissioner Kaylee, would you like to start today?
Sure. Both of my meetings last week ended up being canceled, so I have no reports.
Very good. Commissioner Gross?
The two meetings, not scheduled meeting, but I went to two township, went to Hagan Township last night, and just glad to hear they're very satisfied with Dave Herxog up there. He's our operator. Their roads are very, they're very satisfied with the road maintenance up there. They seem to be in good shape up there. I mean, everything's going on good for Hagan Township. And from there, I went to the city of Hittodoll and went and attended their meeting, and they two were doing good. I mean, they're happy with the way the county is operating, their assistance they're getting and stuff like that, so they're very happy with that operation. So it sounded, I mean, they got good reports from both places, and just glad to hear that.
Thank you, Commissioner Gross. Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you. And the only meeting I had was the construction meeting yesterday for the transfer station project. Nothing really new to report on that. They're pouring lots of concrete right now. They've got the, all the underground plumbing done in the Area B, which is the administration portion, portion of the facility. The electrical, underground electrical is going in this week. Once that's complete, they will be doing the floor, the concrete floor, and then they will be able to start the, they'll actually be able to start the internal work for the office portion of that. And then, then the, on the Area C, which is the tipping floor area, the largest part of the building, the, if you drive out there right now, there's push walls that they're, they're constructing. They're extremely tall, concrete structures that allow, that keep the garbage from being able to, or stay confined within a certain area. And we did approve a, a, instead of a guardrail system that was, the projected cost was, I think, over thirty thousand dollars that, that goes in, in the tipping floor area, we went with a chain link fence, and I think that number was more like ten thousand dollars, twelve thousand dollars versus thirty, so we saved significant dollars there. I did ask, they're going to be presenting some new drone footage on the, at the SWAC meeting, and I did ask that, that they bring that to our board that same week, so that Tuesday of the, whatever that date.
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, we will have an update that'll show some drone footage, which you'll, I think you'll really find interesting. And it's a, that site's a big site, and a lot of, lots happening, but it's moving positively in the right direction. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Yes, Commissioner Gross?
I want to addition, I see on the upcoming meetings, we don't have August the second listed as a upcoming meeting. I mean, that is, I would say that's still going on, isn't it?
What date?
August second.
Yeah. So I think we'd have to add that to the upcoming meetings.
Yeah.
Not a big point, but...
Yeah, thank you.
Maybe clean one of the day off.
Yeah, probably.
Okay, Commissioner Eminger?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the seventh, I attended virtually the Emergency Communication Networks Legislative Committee. One of, one of the first issues we're dealing with was a mental health crisis policy meeting that was set up with the federal government through SAMSA. And it was a, a review by core groups, 911 representatives, 988 representatives, some of the people from Lifeline, and mobile crisis teams within the state to identify gaps that have not been addressed in legislation, and to develop priorities that we're going to have in implementing 988 and in mobile crisis teams. Standards are going to be developed, the priorities were developed by this team. We're going to be reviewing them and participate in establishing the standards with the Department of Health. Unfortunately, a lot of the definition of 988, 988 systems and funding for 988 systems were contained in the Department of Health omnibus bill that did not pass. So that is in limbo until the next session, and hopefully we can get it passed, so that new technology can be deployed for 988, and there'll be legislation supporting and defining 988 systems. We also talked about public safety telecommu- telecommunications certification, or telecommunications certification. This is an effort to, to establish standards for radio operators and 911 dispatchers. This will probably, if we ever get legislation, also include 988 operators. It was in the Public Safety Omnibus Bill, which, again, was another bill that didn't pass. So representatives from our team met with the governor, but to no avail. And we'll move forward and go after the certification with the help from AMC and the Sheriff's Association, try and get this back on track in future legislative sessions. There was also discussion, we had problems getting some changes to the overall 911 legislation through this year. And part of the problem was that we had not gotten with public utility committee petitioners, people who represent private industry in this area, and we're continuing to work with them, in addition to the Sheriff's Association. And we hope to bring some things forward in the next legislative session. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Eminger. I know that session ended a while ago, but the frustration level for those of us that are charged with implementing vital programs and projects statewide, to not have an agreement in St. Paul just really leaves us, all of us out here in limbo mode. There are very important, vitally important, life or death important things that are not able to happen because of a lack of agreement. And, you know, I just feel like it's on deaf ears, but just to not agree because it's all in an enormous, enormous bill, just call a special session and dig out those pieces that are important. And, you know, they're not going to listen to Commissioner Mojo from Clay County, but it is unbelievable.
I can't express the frustration I've heard in funding senior programs, in 911 communications, and establishing 988 system, and addressing mental health issues. Every time I turn around, there's another meeting that we're having with county officials. It happened at our regional AMC meeting, where the frustration level is there, because it goes to St. Paul and it disappears. And these are real legitimate needs. And I hope we can express that with, to a number of the, not just in our area, but statewide, the new legislators that are coming in. We get things done because we don't worry about representing a party. We represent our citizens, and they need to be in the same boat. And that's probably a little controversial to say, but our nonpartisan position here is, I think, has benefited our taxpayers. And that perception, or that perspective needs to be adopted by everybody.
Thank you. Sorry to insert my soapbox there, but it's frustrating. Okay. Last, this week, I only had one meeting. I also attended the construction manager, or the construction meeting of the transfer station. Commissioner Campbell covered that well. This week, I, I invite folks to head out to the Clay County Fair in Barnesville. That's such a great thing. The fair board works very hard to maintain that in Barnesville.
such a great thing, the fair board works very hard to maintain that in Barnesville. It's a free gate, it's a great family fun event. The county day at the fair is on Friday from noon to 4:00. I noticed it's not advertised, it probably should be. But there are lots of great things to do and see. A lot of kids are working really hard to get there, so that does conclude my report. Steve?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last week with our afternoon board, I was gone Wednesday through Friday of last week, so I worked with Clean to prepare for this week, budget packet, appreciate the time of being off last week, so thank you. Yesterday, I participated in the resource recovery, a meeting that's been addressed by both of our commissioners. I did get to take a real brief tour, just to kind of take a look over what Commissioner Campbell had talked about, and it is, it's very impressive. And so, the, yesterday afternoon, I met with Brett Rice and received an update on the landfill project. It sounds like they're making some great progress there. The potential of our, our boiler that we've talked about that has had some issues is now functioning. They did some work on some of the roads that they were having challenges with, and so, again, they have a, kind of a target date of August 5th as a substantial completion date. They're going to be starting that project that this board approved for the SAGI gas lines next, next week, and so that, looking for that to take about a week to a week and a half. So a lot of good, good news there, and, and just to reiterate, Madam Chair, we are going to be out there from noon to 4:00 PM. We're going to be in a different, different location this year, we're going to be over by the sheriff. We also have a signage identifying who we are, so hopefully that will be...
Open class building.
Good for our citizens, so. That concludes my report.
All right. Brian, do you have anything to add?
Madam Chair, maybe if I can bring you your attention to the board, I, just within my office, I'm doing some moving around of personnel, including myself. I've been doing mainly civil work for the last, about a year and a half, but I'm doing some change within the Civil Division, which is Chief Katie Stock and then Mike Leiser. I expect you'll probably see Mike here at the board some, or more often here in the future, so I just thought I'd bring that to your attention, that just changes things around, and expect you might see some different personnel here at times, so hoping to give you some advice.
Well, we certainly appreciate the presence of your department. It's, it's helpful for us if questions arise, so thank you. Colleen, do you have anything? All right, if not, we are adjourned.